Hi everybody and welcome into a real news interview. I'm Clifton French with Real News Michiana and I'm joined by the PHM MAGA candidate, Ben Dallas. He's running for school board in the Penn Harris Madison School District. And Ben, thank you for joining me. Really, I'm just going to get started with the first thing that I think is the most interesting. And that's how you were able to kind of find a workaround on, on school board races that are typically no party affiliation.
Right, so I'm glad you asked that. That was one of the fun things I've done with setting up my campaign here. What I did was I was basically reading the paperwork that you, that you fill out. And my biggest issue for the last several years, okay, was that in Indiana, we're a red state. I mean, we actually have a super majority in both the House and the Senate. But yet, school board elections are nonpartisan, right? So I said, there's gotta be a workaround. If they're speaking to legislators, what legislatures, legislators, it didn't happen. So I tried to get this workaround and I looked and I saw that you can have a nickname on your candidate petition. You can have a nickname. So I contacted the county clerk. The county clerk confirmed that I can, in fact, put a nickname on my candidacy petition of MAGA, Republican or GOP, or whatever you pick. I picked MAGA.
Yeah, this is something that I don't believe has ever been done before. You know, and I do expect that there could be some challenges, right? They could challenge it, you know, hey, these are supposed to be nonpartisan. They could challenge it at the election board. What would your response be? Before we move on, if you're watching this video on YouTube, don't forget, like this video and also subscribe to our channel. That really helps us out. And don't forget, visit realnewsmichiana.com. There you'll find daily investigative stories, exclusive content put together by me. You'll also be able to make a one-time donation, or if you want, become a subscribing member. All of that support helps us keep the lights on.
Well, my response would be, be more creative. How about read your paperwork before you sign up to run if that offends you? Because if you don't like that, how about you change the, how about you change the rules? Do it the right way.
Why are you running?
Why am I running? Because I don't like the direction of, I guess, the leadership of our schools, right? So Penn Harris Madison is always a top five school in the state. It just always has been. So we have great teachers. We have great facilities. But what we don't have is leadership, real leadership. That's where I come in. So I have a military background. I have a lot of experience in the leadership department. I think that's what we're seriously lacking. Because right now, when I go to school board meetings, I feel like I'm watching an episode of the Jerry Springer Show and not an actual school board meeting. That's a disgrace to this community. We can do better. I plan on doing better.
When did you decide that you were gonna run?
Well, I've been really seriously thinking about this a few years ago. As you know, I've been speaking at these school board meetings for the last three years.
Oh, you, yeah, you've been going to every school. I mean, you've missed maybe what, one, one or two in the last three years?
Except for the three months where they banned me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's another story. Yeah, that's another story. So yeah, I go to most of the school board meetings. I'm involved. I speak frequently. I don't have a popular opinion amongst the school board members, that is. But I say what's on my mind and I say what needs to be changed. And the bottom line is, I'm not being listened to. Things are not happening. Things need to happen. Okay, we need to get this DEI stuff out of our schools. I understand the position is now on hold and nobody's doing the position. That doesn't mean that it's not happening. Okay, we need some leadership. We need some leadership in this realm. I don't think, I don't want my kids to go to school and be taught by their teacher that they were born in the wrong body. Or they should hate somebody because that person has a different skin color. Or they should not like me because, or be ashamed of their own skin color. I don't, I don't think that's appropriate. I don't want my kids to be little activists, so to speak. I want my kids to get an education. Want our school board to get the crap out of our schools, start doing their jobs.
Tell me about your family.
Okay, thanks for asking. So I have a, my wife is from the Philippines. I met her when I was in the military, serving overseas. So we have four children together. They're all of mixed race. And I guess that's why a lot of this is personal to me. Because I don't want my kids going to school. I don't want teachers telling them their potential is limited because of their ethnic background, because of their skin color. I thought we got rid of that back in the 1950s. Apparently I was wrong.
No, pitting and also, you know, it's trying to make your children choose between, specifically with a mixed race family, right? Choose between parents. One of your parents is an oppressor, the other one is oppressed, right? It's, it's pretty disgusting. And, and that has been, I think that that has been the, you know, I have, I'm in a mixed, mixed race marriage as well. You know, a mixed race daughter. And the last thing that I want for her is to go to school and be taught that her mom is powerless and her dad is evil, right? Which is, which is exactly what's being taught to our children still today.
Right, you know, I mean, I'm, I guess I should be happy that now our kids would qualify for another Jerry Thacker scholarship.
Yeah.
But no, I'm not. Because I don't want things to come to them because of their ethnic background. I want them to get things from hard work, okay? What an awful concept. So let's get some leadership in this school board and let's get things done. Let's make it happen.
So let's go to the big, the big controversy you were involved in. That, that I investigated for, for a long time. I mean, it appears that there were school board members who committed crimes with, you know, against you. It appears, you know, there was a lot of illegal action that was taken against you simply for speaking your mind. And, and also for being successful in filing, filing complaints with the state and filing complaints with federal government. So you filed one complaint that, that showed that PHM was breaking the, the law when it came to public records. That was what, last March? Is that correct?
Yes, it was around that timeframe. It was a public access law. So basically, the school board president, Chris Riley, and his vice president, one of my opponents, Ryan McCullough, they would not allow the public to speak before voting on an island, on an item, right? It was an agenda item. It just so happened to be an agenda item that re-elected Chris Riley is the president of the board. The board was voting on, they wouldn't let people speak about it beforehand because their families were there. They didn't want to be embarrassed by people's opinions. So they voted on it first, gave themselves the authority first, then said, okay peasants, you can speak.
Yeah, and you, you were successful in that complaint. Now the public access counselor currently uses your case against PHM and Chris Riley. The public access counselor, which is in charge of all of the, 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 the public records laws and advisements in the state of Indiana. He now uses that case as examples and in a pamphlet to show, hey, this isn't what you should not do. So it was a big, you know, it's, it's a bad PR. It's bad PR for PHM. The fact that, that is out there and floating around and used as an example of what school boards should not do. You filed another racial complaint that was also successful.
Right, so racial and gender, actually. So what it was, was PHM advertised on a STEM conference event. What STEM is, is science, technology, engineering and math. It was a STEM event for middle school students in two different middle schools. One of them was Grissom Middle School, where my own son goes to school, okay? And what happened was, the flyer said you had to be a girl to go to this science event. And then on top of that, you had to be a girl of color. Or if you don't have a certain skin color, you gotta pay a fee to get into the event. Now, since when does science care about gender and skin color? You answer that question to me and maybe we got something to talk about. But until then, you're violating children's civil rights. And someone needs to stand up for that. I did, I won the case.
So the Office of Civil Rights comes out. So the Office of Civil Rights comes out. So now we're getting into a little bit more, right? So the Office of Civil Rights comes out and they, they, they rule in your favor for this complaint. Because you said, hey, listen, you're violating the civil rights of, of children. And, and the Office of Civil Rights, it's not, not a conservative group, mind you. They ruled in your favor, they did an investigation, they ruled in your favor. The following day, PHM bans you from school property for a meme that you made.
Well, yes, that's exactly what happened, unfortunately. Unfortunately for the public, actually. Because now, there's a lot of parents that have contacted me since then. They're afraid to speak out. They're afraid to give their opinions about the school because they're afraid they're next. They're afraid that they'll use law enforcement on them next for simply having a different opinion. So I guess that's another reason I'm running. Okay, to take the school safety program and um, how about we, how about we, how about we make school safety about school safety? Okay, not after, not about going after your political opponents. That's essentially what they did with me. They, they perverted school safety. They turned it in, okay, to, to basically, you know, their own little police where they could go after their political opponents. And I think that's disgraceful. It's un-American. It should never happen again. I've yet to get her, get an apology from the, the people involved, i.e. Chris Riley, the school board president, who reopened the same investigation against me. We can talk about that later.
Yeah, so let's get a little bit into this. So a little bit of background. By the way, if you want to read all about this, go to realnewsmichiana.com. Just put in the search bar at realnewsmichiana.com, Ben Dallas's name, PHM, you'll find it. Essentially, Ben, you know, I did a bunch of investigations into this. Ben had made a meme of the school board president, Chris Riley, as Neo from The Matrix. And this meme is probably the most popular meme on the internet where Neo is dodging, you know, he's dodging shots being fired at him. But people change it, they change it all the time. They'll, they'll, you know, for a football reference, they'll, they'll change the, the shots into footballs and people just not being able to catch a ball or dodging the balls, right? Or dodging tough issues, dodging questions. And that's what you did. You've made, you put, superimposed Chris Riley's face and he was dodging, dodging issues. And those issues were accountability, critical race theory, things like, things of that nature. They then, PHM said, oh no, that was violence, that was a violent threat toward Chris Riley, the school board president, which is just ridiculous. He filed a police report. It was investigated. Then he's like, he didn't like, you know, it was investigated quickly. The detective, the, the school resource officer who investigated it said, no, this is not violence, a violent threat at all. Closed out the case. Chris Riley then had, had, had a school employee, which is, by the way, illegal. He had a school employee dig into three years of your social media accounts where you have been critical of the school district, submitted all of those, like, three years worth of social media content to the police claiming that you are a threat to the school district. Submitted just comments that you make. Dude, you were in the, you were in the army. You were in the army. Veterans and people who are in the military typically have a little bit more energy. The superintendent said that he wants to keep you out of the school district because he's scared because they believe you own guns and you're a veteran. They kept you out of, out of schools for three months. Forced the police department to investigate three years of your social media. The investigation's completed, they find nothing. The police report you can read for yourself at realnewsmichiana.com. They find nothing. He says, listen, he submitted, he committed zero threats of violence. He has just been critical of the school district. And they finally, after all of that, and after you got lawyers involved, allowed you back onto school grounds. You know, you were treated by far the worst out of any single parent that I know of within this school district.
Meanwhile, that same school board president is perfectly okay with a sex worker. I'm working for the school, moonlighting as a teacher's assistant, dressed up as a sexualized Polly Pocket and wearing that same dress to school. Yeah, he's okay with that social media. And that's all on Facebook, by the way. And it's on Real News Michiana. So they're okay with that, but let's not make a Matrix meme.
Yep.
Your kids will be good.
And I mean, and so, and so what Ben is talking about right now is, so there was a, there's a special ed assistant who, you know, works with elementary school children, many who are non-verbal, can't tell you anything. And he works one-on-one with these children. And at night and on the weekends, he does drag shows where he dresses up as a sexualized children's toy, a Polly Pocket children's toy, and pretends to give oral sex on stage. That person was allowed to have their job, or to keep their job. That person still works in, in a PHM elementary school. And, and they didn't punish this teacher, this, this teacher's aide, this, this assistant, this, this special ed assistant, because they said that it would be a violation of his First Amendment rights. But they were completely fine with going after a conservative who made a meme that was obviously not threatening in any single way. And then investigate his social media for three, three years of his social media content. It's, it's, it's pretty disgusting. Now, I'd be, the last thing I want to get into right now is, well, also, sorry, I'm gonna go back. During all of that too, one person, one other person on the school board, the vice president of the school board, Ryan McCullough, who you are running against, reached out to your boss, to your employer, and tried to get you fired from your, from your, from your private sector job.
Yeah, so now, if you didn't know why my nickname is MAGA, now I hope this has been clearly explained. Yeah, they're using lawfare against a parent. Yeah, against a parent who's not even affiliated with the school. They're just using lawfare against me. So this is what happened. It's all available on Real News Michiana if you want to look at, if you haven't heard of it already, a lot of people have. So it is what it is. It's a disgrace. It's a disgrace that this has happened to our community. PHM was once a great school. We can all agree with that. That's why you moved your family halfway across the country. Your kids could be in PHM. It was a great school until about the year 2020. Gee, what happened in the year 2020, Clifton? I'm not sure. So we had all this social unrest. We had this big George Floyd, what was that, this referendum or this, what was it, the resolution?
Resolution, yeah, it was, we're gonna get rid of racism, we're such a racist school. You know, we're this, we're that. And by, I mean, all it, all it did was say, like, hey, we're gonna be anti-racist, which is race, I mean, that just means you're gonna be racist toward white people, right? It was, it was pretty disgusting. And then they went, the sexualization of children, you know, I mean, they've, they've gone crazy with it.
This was like a snowball. It kept getting bigger, they kept piling more DEI under this crap sandwich and it just kept going and going.
Supremacy. By the way, by the way, the Pyramid of White Supremacy, you know, MAGA was at the very top of that pyramid, which was like right next to genocide.
It was, so there was a Pyramid of White Supremacy that Clifton is talking about. It was handed out to teachers. It was supposed to be part of the curriculum and they were gonna teach teachers to tell children, if you say things like, it doesn't matter who you voted for, racist.
They were gonna be giving it to kids. They're gonna be giving that to kids. The, the, the social emotional learning. The only reason they did, didn't was because I published a story and a bunch of teachers came out and were like, hey, listen, this is like, yeah, we're, we're, we're on board with this being removed. This is bad.
So the same people who thought that was a good idea are still on the school board right now, just so you know.
Currently.
A lot of them are still on the school board right now. The same people that thought that was a great idea. The same people who thought that that sex worker should be a teacher's assistant, they're still on the board right now. Ryan McCullough is one of them. He thought that was a good idea, okay? The same people who thought that allowing minors, children to change their gender, names and pronouns without the involvement, the participation or acknowledgement of the parents, those people are on the school board right now.
Including Ryan McCullough.
Voter for that twice. Voter for it twice. So these are all crazy things that have happened with current leadership. This needs to change.
You're, you have, you have two other candidates, you have two other opponents too. I mean, there, there are four people running for this current seat. One of them is a, is a woman by the name of Katie Bell. She's, I can't really read her. She's liberal and conservative. I honestly, I believe that she's gonna probably pull more votes. I mean, she supported the, the sex worker. But I believe that she's gonna be pulling more votes from, from Ryan McCullough than anything. But you're also running against Doug Chaffee. Doug Chaffee is, he's the father of current school board member, Matt Chaffee. And he's the former principal, I have some stories coming out on him, but he was the former principal of Penn High School. He probably has the best name recognition of the people who you're running against. Been some public drama involving Doug Chaffee and his son. Go to realnewsmichiana.com, you can look this up. I did investigative piece. Matt Chaffee, who's currently on the school board. I did a story, an investigative story about his, his, his desire and, and essentially, he buys a bunch of prostitutes and has for many years. And I got that information initially from his own father. And there's a bunch of things going on between, in that family, you know. I'm, I'm, I'm honestly shocked that he decided to run for school board. His, his son just endorsed him. It's, it's, it's just bizarre. He brought up, I think he brought up Jerry Springer earlier. I mean, it's, it's Jerry Springer-esque and it's in the operations and management of our school district.
Right, so I've had a few, listen, as far as Katie Bell's concerned, I communicated with her for a little bit. I thought she was a nice enough person, you know, seemed nice. I did a little, a little bit of research on her. And she did support that sex worker who, you know, who's, who's a teacher's assistant that works for the school. And to me, that's, that's a non-starter. So I stopped communicating with her as soon as I found that out. But when I did speak with her, she seemed like a nice enough person, looked like she had some good intentions. I'm just not impressed with her track record. As far as Doug Chaffee's concerned, I met him a few times. Again, had some great conversations with the guy. Think he's a nice guy. Think he's got a good record with the school overall. However, with all this drama with his son, who's another school board member, I don't think a school board election, okay, or even the school board itself, is the right platform. It's not the right venue to hash out family, family issues. I don't think we need to see that unfold in the public eye. I think our school's better than that. So I see, I see this unfolding in front of me. And I just, I wish the family well. I think they should probably maybe seek some, you know, some guidance, maybe talk to somebody to hash out their family plans, not putting this out in front of a school board election. We don't need to see this. They're, I mean, they're, I mean, I don't know, all of Matt's stuff is crazy, right? Crazy. And he started off, I mean, doing great things for the school board. He really did. He was doing some great things, but with all of this out there, now that we know that he did it, he hasn't even tried to deny it yet. For that being the case, we can't have him on the school board. We just, I mean, come on, if, if Ryan McCullough was being accused of this, if Chris Riley, if Claire Roach, anyone was being accused of this, these same parents, the SOS group, they would be up there in pitchforks demanding that they step down. But since it's their own, one of their own, tribalism kicks in. Tribalism kicks in. Oh, it's okay, we'll overlook that because that's our guy. That's the problem with today's politics. That's the problem with these school, with this school board situation. Okay, let's get the family drama, all the crap, let's get it out of there. Let's get it out of here, okay? If, I'm sorry, but if you're gonna file a protective order against your own father or vice versa?
Well, that's Chaffee's girlfriend, that, that story's gonna be coming out. But, uh, but yeah, I mean.
So if you're, if you're filing protective orders against your own family members?
I mean, and so I will be, I mean, I guess I'll give you everybody a little bit of a preview. Doug Chaffee threatened and attacked a young woman who was, who was dating his son. Threatened and attacked a young woman who was dating his son. And, and, and she was forced to get a protection order against him. You know, and I mean, and this guy was the principal and he wants to be on the school board. And on, on top of that, he's, then, then he's spilling all of his dirt about his son to me to write a story about him. And now they're friends again and they're gonna support each other on, I mean, you, children go to PHM, your children go to PHM. The school board is not the place for family therapy. Or just lunacy. Like, we're trying to get the lunatics off who, who I disagree with politically anyway. I'm not going to be a hypocrite. The same thing needs to be done for the people who are on our side or, or, you know, tend to lean toward a more conservative belief system, they need to go to. If you, if, if you got those problems, I'm sorry, you gotta go. You gotta go. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna be consistent, I'm gonna call balls and strikes on all of it. I'm also requesting Doug Chaffee's personnel file. So, you know, we'll see when, when that gets fulfilled, but I'm putting in a public quest for his personnel file. So I will be putting that information out there. Because he is, he is a teacher. I'm also gonna request Katie Bell's. Katie Bell was, was also a teacher. I'm not sure if she still is, but also a teacher, I'll be requesting her personnel file as well. If you were a teacher, Ben, I would request your, your personnel file too. Last thing, you know, just your, your final pitch. You know, what makes you qualified to serve on the, on the school board of Penn Harris Madison?
Well, thanks for the question. I appreciate it. So what makes me qualified is my experience in leadership. My experience in reading the room. Okay, you gotta read the room, understand your constituents, understand what they want. I'll tell you what they want. They want, they want a time like pre-COVID times, pre-2020 times, where you can drop your kid off to go to school and know that they're in good hands. You could know that the school board had your back. They had the, the best intentions of your children. Okay, that's what, that's how they were forming their policies. Nowadays, the, the intentions are all, it's all self-serving. It's all self-serving. These people, they, they, they want political clout. They want, they want attention, things of that nature. They don't care about your kids anymore. That needs to change. We did, we did a center our school board, center our school board around what helps the children, what brings parents back involved in our kids' education. Because right now, the so-called triangle, it's not just broken, Clifton, it's shattered. Okay, parents, parents aren't a part of the triangle anymore. Students are not a part of the triangle anymore. Not even teachers. You know, you know, you know who the triangle is? It's Riley, McCullough and Roach.
Yep.
School board members, it's all about themselves.
And the superintendent.
In the superintendent, that, that's what the triangle's about. And it's a shame, I never wanted to run for school board. This was never on my bucket list, Clifton. This was never a goal of mine. And after coming to these school board meetings and watching this dumpster fire in front of me, I have no choice but to get involved. That I will, that I promise you.
Yeah, well, Ben, I appreciate you joining me. I'm sure we're gonna be talking a lot more. Everybody, you know, where, where can they find you? Do you, you're gonna be getting a website going, you're gonna be getting a Facebook page going. All of this is very, very, very new. You're gonna be getting all this stuff up and running. Hopefully people can then get donations. I'll be, I'll, I'll make sure to push all that stuff out as well. But right now, I, you know, they can find some of your, you know, your parody stuff on, on YouTube. Just search for Ben Dallas, correct?
Let's go to YouTube, search for Ben Dallas. My handle on YouTube is Ben's rant nation, kind of a lot to remember. So just look for Ben Dallas. Look for Ben Dallas, you'll find all my videos and my whole story's on there. So you'll see examples of everything that I just talked about in this interview. You'll see it on my YouTube channel.
All right, Ben Dallas, the MAGA PHM school board candidate. All right, Ben Dallas, the MAGA PHM school board candidate. Uh, thank you for joining us. And, uh, I'm sure we'll be in touch very soon.
Thank you, sir. Good being on your show.